You'd just have to see what they said two weeks ago.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission, September 29th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you are parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on Agenda Item 1.2, Special Permit 04010A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 15th, 2021.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Shear.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Item 1.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21019 to review as to conformance with the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A request to declare city-owned land near the Ashland Treatment Plant as surplus on property generally located at 5th and Cedar Streets, Ashland, Saunders County, Nebraska. Item 1.2 is Special Permit 04010A to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption both on and off the premises on property generally located at 7301 South 27th Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this item? Or these items, I'm sorry.
No.
Are there any exporte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of these two consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
All right. Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Cor.
Okay. This is for the approval of the consent agenda. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Jerry, will you call the request for deferral?
Yes. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission allow for a two-week deferral of public hearing and action on Agenda Items 2.1A and 2.1B, and I will read those into the record. The reason for this is to allow for renotification of all adjacent property owners for these two applications. This would continue the public hearing and action to the October 13th hearing. Item 2.1A is Change of Zone 08066C, amending the existing alley PUD or Planned Unit Development to add the mixed-use designation on two lots and add density for residential development with requested waivers. And the associated street and alley vacation is 21006 to vacate the entire alley between P and Q Streets and adjacent lots 1 through 6 and 8 through 12 of Kinney's O Street Edition and lots A and C of Webster's Subdivision. Both of these properties are generally located north of P Street between 22nd and 23rd Streets.
I would move for deferral of Change of Zone 08066C and also Street and Alley Vacation 21006.
Second, Shear.
Okay. This is for the deferral of Change of Zone and the associated street and alley vacation. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these applications today? Seeing none, we will now proceed to the public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members or included as a part of the record, please provide the information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Item 4.1 is Change of Zone 21035 from H3 Highway Commercial District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 3301 West O Street. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any exporte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
Hi, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Where we're at, this is West O Street, southwest 32nd Street. The request, as Jerry read, is to change the zoning from H3 Highway Commercial to I1 Industrial. So the zoning line presently is here. It would be shifted up north approximately 300 feet. The purpose of this request is to accommodate a business expansion so their building will better fit the site and be allowed under the I1 zoning as opposed to the H3 zoning. Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department, as a part of the review of this project, indicates that, well, no traffic signal will be needed. A traffic study will be required. And I would just note that the existing facilities that they have are along southwest 32nd Street, and they don't presently have access on West O. So what's changing here and what's behind this request is an expansion, including the two properties to the west, and now they're also proposing a new access on West O Street. So there will be a traffic study required, a right-hand turn lane as well. In addition, there will be a public access easement. I have a slightly expanded aerial here that shows the existing industrial facilities. Again, this is West O, and then just off the edge of the map is the correctional facility. So the access easement would extend along the south side of West O, and as these properties are developed, would provide for means of east-west connection. Previously, there was a street, Westview Avenue, that was vacated on the north side of Nature's Variety, the applicant's property. So there, in the past, there was a plan to have some kind of street connection. That no longer is the case, but we would have connection with the access easement. L T U Watershed is requiring a grading and drainage study for the entire site that would be submitted as part of the preliminary plat. A zoning agreement is proposed as a condition of approval. This agreement will require the traffic-related improvements identified by L T U and anything additional identified by the traffic study. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
I have one question. So when I looked at page 57 in the report, I see there's one section that still is H3. I understand I zoning gives a little bit more ability to, for permitting and work on that zone, in that zone? Any reason why it's still considered H3? And this is page 57.
Page, page, I'm sorry, which page?
So, this.
Oh, yes. So that's, that was an additional exhibit that was submitted as part of the change of zone. And so again, the zoning line, maybe I'll shift this with West O Street on the top or north. The existing zoning line is here, so H3 is to the north. And the request is just to extend it partway, not the whole way, towards West O because their facility would otherwise not be allowed under H3 because it would be considered industrial, and the H3 wouldn't permit the industrial. So they're just doing enough of an expansion of the zoning area to allow further use and get the building permit.
Okay. Thank you. What would be permitted in the H3 then, George?
So H3 is highway commercial. Those uses would include retail, for example, various auto-related businesses, auto sales, car wash facilities, you know, body shops and so forth. The key difference, especially in this case, is the manufacturing, where they're going to have a manufacturing use that would otherwise not be allowed in H3, but it would be allowed in the I1.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tracy? All right. All right. Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Testimony from the applicant.
Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of the applicant. The change of zone, again, the idea is, so Nature's Variety, now known as Instinct Pet Foods, is the business out there, and we're looking at a pretty large and exciting expansion, more to come on that in future applications. But ultimately, the idea is, you know, for a larger manufacturing plant, we need that I1 zoning. The zoning exists correctly, it's just the, as you saw, the, we just need a little more, little more space. And so by bringing that, bringing that I1 line from essentially here up about 300 feet, we retain that H3 zoning along O Street and expand enough where we can, where the instinct can, can make the improvements and the expansion they want. So it's a, again, all the zoning's the same, we're just kind of shifting the line a little bit, and we're still retaining that H3 along O Street. And I think everything else, you know, from, from Instinct's perspective, we've, we've been working on this pretty frantically. I think, you know, we, as part of the, the zoning agreement that would have to be done, we, you know, we still need to do the traffic study. That will be done, and then we'll figure out what, what's required. We'll know that when the study's done, but that's the next step, is getting, we'll be doing that study and then figuring out what, what happens next. The, I guess, the only thing I, I just want to, let's see. Yeah, talking to planning staff and talking about what the public access easement is that allows that connectivity all the way across to these other parcels. The applicant owns really this parcel and this parcel, and this one here where the current property, the current plant is. The expansion, the projected expansion really is on this first parcel. Ideally, hopefully, there'll be some future expansion, but that's not part of its plan. So with, with the new building, proposed building going here and nothing being developed over here yet, and I guess this doesn't quite have the correction, the J O's access point over here, we don't really know what that is, and even the applicant doesn't have a plan for building on this lot yet. So all, all we hope to see is that we can, you know, in this zoning agreement, which obviously we don't need to figure out today, is can we just work on the timing? We don't want to build a drive out to here that goes to nowhere where we even know what we're building or what the adjacent party is building, but we'll, we'll certainly want the agreement to say, we'll build it when we need to, and we'll, we'll create the, we'll create the drive that's required. We want to keep it kind of located as far, far to, you know, near O Street as we can legally under, under law. But again, that's all part of the zoning agreement. So I think, I feel, I think we're going to get those things worked out. That's not necessarily, that will be part of the zoning agreement, but just to kind of show where, where the applicant is, is, is kind of their, their mind is, is, you know, the initial build-out will be right here. Hopefully, if everything works so well, we'll see future expansion, and then whenever it's needed, we'll make sure that that's built out, that that drive connects to the, to the other properties. So it's more of a timing issue at this point. I think everything else we can, we can figure out in that zoning agreement, and it really will. This, this change of zone will be pretty beneficial to allow the, the manufacturing expansion that they're trying to do. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Two questions. One is, is this the same company that's on 56th or North 77?
Yeah, so Nature's Variety has several, yeah, it's Instinct now, Nature's Variety, same company, different branding, but several, several properties around town. And the idea here is to create a, to the center of excellence, the idea to, to put everything into one location, really to streamline and, you know, locate everything together, but same company, just larger, hopefully a larger facility, all, all-inclusive of their.
Will they continue to use the North 56th property?
Good question. I don't have the answer. I can, I can defer that.
It's not that important.
There'll be, there'll be more coming, so maybe we can address that at the next, at the next time I'm in front of you.
The second question, would you put your map back up there with that? Coming off of West O Street, how will the drive go to get to that property then?
So the, so currently, at the, at Instinct Plant currently, everybody's coming off of Southwest 32nd Street.
Right.
People are entering here. The goal ideally will be employees continue to use Southwest 32nd Street to, to approach the property, but to divert any truck traffic that would, that would be going now, because there'll obviously be more truck traffic as well, but divert that to this entrance. How will that come down? I mean, I'm not exactly sure, because again, we're, our building is going to be about here, you know, so they would be, you know, they're parking in drive right there.
So that dotted area coming off of West 32nd will not go in?
That, no, that, that's the vacated right, that is actually vacated right-of-way.
Okay.
This is the, I mean, the entrance off 32nd, Southwest 32nd to the, to the Instinct property is down.
It's where the trucks are?
Yep.
Okay.
But the idea would be to divert, so that no truck traffic would be coming through this Southwest 32nd Street to the Instinct Plant, would all be coming off of O through this entrance.
Okay.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'll take testimony in support of the application? Any testimony, neutral testimony? What about testimony in opposition? Okay. Staff questions? Applicant rebuttal? Okay. At this time, take a moment.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Cor.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
I would move to approve Change of Zone 21035 from Highway 3 to Industrial 1.
Second, Shear.
Any discussion?
I think this looks like a good change of zone. It'll allow a business to expand while keeping the H3, the retail towards O Street, which is a good plan for the future, and I support it.
Agreed. I would agree.
All right. Jerry?
Okay. This is for the conditional approval of Change of Zone 21035. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next item is Item 4.2, Change of Zone 21036 from R1 Residential District to O3 Planned Unit Development with associated wafer, waivers on property generally located at South 70th and South Streets. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed?
No.
Are there any exporte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No.
George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Where we're at with this change of zone is between Monterey Drive and South Street on the west side of South 70th Street. Again, the proposal is for a change of zone from R1 Residential to O3 PUD Planned Unit Development. This includes approximately 3.73 acres. It's the site of an existing church, daycare and preschool, and a single-family home. The PUD proposes two phases. The first phase, in the first phase, the, the church will continue to operate for 15 months and the daycare for up to 39 months. The south single-family home will be removed, and a parking lot will be constructed. This parking lot and the portions of the existing parking lot will be leased to Lincoln Surgical Hospital and Nebraska Surgery Center, which for reference are, for those that don't know already, those are off to the northeast, east of, northeast of Lincolnshire and South 70th intersection. The proposed phasing does include 27,600 square feet of floor area for Phase 1. Phase 2 would allow for up to 62,500 square feet of floor area. Phase 2 will include the removal of the church and daycare uses. And then the possible construction or proposed construction of a, a new building in the middle of the site. So the intent of this PUD is to allow flexibility for the church and daycare uses to continue until they phase out, while at the same time allowing for parking associated with the hospital and surgery center uses, which are not located directly on the site. Otherwise, the parking for said uses would not be permitted as primary use in the O3 zoning. As the church and daycare uses cease, the church building will be remodeled for medical office use. So transportation-related improvements associated with this project include the removal of one access point to Monterey Drive, the one being closest to South 70th, and also one access point to South 70th that would be removed. The southbound right turn lane in South 70th Street would be extended, and a turn lane will be added for access to South Street. There will be no access connection to the residential neighborhood to the west. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on August 26th at the church, Connecting Point Church, to discuss the project. The general concerns were traffic and stormwater management. No one really had a concern about the uses. It was really those two aspects. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Dick?
George, there will be an act, an entrance then off of South Street also?
Correct. That will be on the south side. It will be located on the west side of the property.
Got it.
George, so the applicant submitted a deviation request. Can you tell me what exactly the deviation is for?
So I don't misspeak, I will let our L T U representative address that question.
I have a lot of questions, but I'm not sure. Let me clarify this. Okay, so in the staff report, it talks about the middle building, the two north buildings and all this stuff. So when they say the two north buildings, do they mean the church and the, and the preschool daycare?
Yes, there's, there's, there's the church, there's a, there's a, there's a house on the south side of the property, there's the church and the, another building here with Phase 2. The, the two buildings would be removed, well, excuse me, the, the, the house will be removed with Phase 1. With Phase 2, the additional building will be removed, which is south of the church. So the only building that exists today that would remain would be the church building, which would be converted to medical office, and then this new building.
I just want to make sure that I had the right ones, was thinking of the right ones in the right spot. In the staff report, it talked about the neighbor concerns about traffic and left-hand turns. Left-hand turns from where? Like, south to 70th? Like, 70th into the property?
At the neighborhood meeting, the concern was that no left-hand turn movements would be allowed on South 70th or South Street, and there, there was concern about the movements on Monterey Drive with the school traffic nearby, Morley Elementary School. And so that's kind of what it centered on.
So coming out of Monterey Drive, there's no left turn onto 70th Street to go north?
There, there is, and I could maybe let Bob chime in.
Yeah, the deviation request, I believe, is for the turn on South Street because it's a short turn lane, and from the consideration of all the traffic involved in that, we think it's appropriate that they have that access point rather than push everything out on the 70th.
So really, okay, so is the deviation request necessary because it's so close to 70th Street?
And the length of the turn lane itself.
Okay. But L T U is wanting them to have the turn lane?
Yes.
And access, of course, too?
Correct.
On that, in that spot? Okay. And then I'm still struggling to understand which left-hand turn motion the neighbors are having concerns about.
I think, and, and the applicant can also chime in when they speak because they were obviously at the meeting as well, but I think the concern was that limitations to movements and then movements out on Monterey Drive with the school, but, but there wouldn't be left-hand turn movements permitted on South 70th or, or South Street.
So when are those two access points going to be closed? With Phase 1 or Phase 2?
You may have to answer.
That, which, I, there's the one that would be closed here on Monterey Drive, and then there's the one that would be closed on South 70th.
Are those going to be closed right away?
I think so. I'm, I might have to rely on others to answer that question.
Okay. Okay. I'll save my rest for the applicant.
All right.
Bob? How long is that turn lane on South Street? The right, that's a right-in, right?
Yes, it's right-in.
I don't, I don't care about the length, just, is it two cars or? I can't tell. Looks like it might be a couple, three cars.
It looks like three cars.
Okay. And you wouldn't know off the top of your head the distance from that drive? the distance from that drive back to the intersection?
No, I wouldn't know that.
Okay.
Bob, south of this property, the access off of South Street was removed for the new medical facility on the south side. And they only have access off of Seventieth. Is that, isn't that correct?
I don't think so. I thought the South Street access still exists as a right-in.
Oh, right, okay.
I think that's right.
Okay.
It's still there. Bob, while you're still up here, I know that they mentioned the pedestrian signal that, you know, is pedestrian-activated on Seventieth Street there. With the school crosswalk study, is that going to stay? That won't affect this crosswalk, will it?
I don't think it will.
Okay, so it'll remain?
Yeah, I've not heard that.
Okay. Looks like Steve has something.
Steve Hendrickson, the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is the Phase One site plan, and it shows that both this driveway and the driveway in Monterey have to be removed with Phase One. So Phase One has both those two driveways go away.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right, other questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you. Testimony from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Robin Lenefelter. Represent the owner at 1710 South Seventieth Street. And do I need to give you my home address, too?
No.
Danae Calkowski, Steve Cresson Calkowski Law Firm, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105. During our presentation, I'm going to let Rob give you a little introduction, talk about the project and the need for it. Then I'll go a little bit over the site plan and the neighborhood outreach. And then Aaron Bright with Olson is with us here today, so he'll be able to answer any other questions we have relating specifically to the site plan. So I thought we'd all go, and then we can answer questions when we get to the end. Thank you.
Lincoln Surgical Hospital's been at this site since 1994. It was also a medical office building and at 1710 South, 1730 South Seventieth Street. In 2017, Lincoln Surgical Hospital acquired the Nebraska Surgery Center, which is on the campus of St. Elizabeth. And we made a determination over time that that wasn't the place that we wanted to be long-term, so we decided to move that to, literally those operations from the St. Elizabeth campus to our campus. So we have totally remodeled the building on 1730 South Seventieth Street and have converted it into an ambulatory surgery center. So on our site, we have a medical office practice, the Lincoln Surgical Hospital, and within a month we'll be having the Nebraska Surgery Center. We meet all the requirements for parking existing what we currently have, so we don't have to do this because we do currently lease space right here, this lot right here, from the church. And we've been leasing that space for a number of years.
Rob, you want to point that out again?
The space that's to the north of the church, right here, we lease those spaces right now. That helps us meet the requirements. We also lease space in the Hampton Buildings to the, to the north. We also lease four buildings in that property as well. And so the church, a few years back, was up for sale on the market. We made a decision at that time that didn't need it, didn't feel like it was part of our long-term plan. As we, again, acquired the Nebraska Surgery Center, we felt like this might be an opportunity for us to acquire some land close to us and that could potentially get changed for zoning. So we had been in negotiations with the Connecting Point Church for the last probably nine to 12 months. In the meantime, they've been looking for property to move their church. They felt, they kind of felt landlocked where they were at, and we have come to an agreement. And part of that agreement is that the church will remain at its current site, and we agreed to keep daycare, which is in the lower level of the church. We agreed to keep that for an additional 39 months. They see it as an outreach, a ministry of their church. We are looking at it for daycare for our employees, and so it was a mutual agreement to do that. At this time, we're looking to construct the, the parking lot there on the south. This parking lot already exists. This is the parking lot that we're looking to construct. And we don't have any plans for this right now, but, so I don't have to come back to you again. Felt like this is a good time to ask for both of these phases, so.
Great, thanks, Rob. I think George did a good job of kind of explaining the application, but we are asking for the zoning as a PUD so that we have that flexibility to allow the church and the daycare uses to stay while we go ahead and build the parking lot without medical office there yet. So it gives us that flexibility to kind of work with the church. We did hold a neighborhood meeting at the church on August 26th. We had about nine neighbors present at that meeting. We've also held multiple phone calls and individual meetings with some of the neighbors that are directly adjacent to the site. As George mentioned, no one really opposed the use of the site, but questions were raised about landscape screening along the west side, traffic impacts, and drainage. So we have made commitments to the neighbors, and you'll see the conditions in the staff report to provide the details with respect to the fence and landscape screening that will be placed along the west side of the property. You'll see we have a request to reduce just the setback on the site so that we can keep the consistent setback from the north parking lot to the new parking lot so that our fence will be consistent along the entire boundary of the property as well as landscaping. So we'll be working, you know, directly with those neighbors on, on making a proposal and kind of helping get what they want to see in that area. With respect to the traffic, again, George mentioned, we will, there will be improvements made around the site that address traffic and entrances and exits. They will be done as part of the first phase of the development, so you'll have that lengthened right turn lane on Seventieth Street, and then we'll actually have the access point and the right turn lane on South Street also. And then finally, with respect to drainage, I'll give the overview, and you can ask Aaron the, the main questions. But obviously, the Phase One development, the things that are being changed is the addition of the parking lot. And I think on the drainage plan, we're showing a detention cell on the site. I don't know if it's shown, not really shown on that site plan, but a detention cell kind of in the southeast corner of the site. And we're showing the drainage going from the, the site into, or to the east into Seventieth Street. So we avoid pushing additional stormwater back to the west and down Sailor Court. And then with respect to the Phase Two development, which would be potentially the office, a new office building in the middle, again, there'd be the removal of an existing small home in a larger building. So there would be additional drainage impacts, which is part of the drainage study. They'll show how we're going to deal with that. It'll either obviously go over to Seventieth Street or be pushed down to the detention cell. But we'll address those drainage issues so that we don't provide additional impact to the neighbors to the west. The drainage that already goes there from the existing parking lot will continue to, to, so you're just going to have the continuation of the existing conditions, okay? I think those were kind of the main things. We're asking for your approval with the adjustments that are shown on the staff report and recommended for approval. We've gone through all of the conditions of approval with staff and our team and are, are okay with all of those conditions of approval. So we'd be asking for your approval, subject to the conditions. And all three of us would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Dennis?
So I don't have a question or concern about vehicular traffic, but can you elaborate a little bit, either one of you, on how you will quote-unquote "program" this parking lot in terms of use? Is it going to be for staff only? Because your, your facility is really a pretty good distance, and I'm sure that for patients who maybe are not greatest walking condition, can you talk about that a little bit? Because there's, you know, obviously an arterial that people parking here to the main facility are going to have to cross and all that stuff.
It is a staff-only parking lot. Like I said, right now, we currently lease this space, and we do, our, our employees do come here and cross at the crosswalk. And we're planning on to, you know, use that space as well, as well as the space for parking. This will be daycare parking, all the space during the day.
Okay, thanks.
Your employees are okay with walking that far?
It's part of the wellness program.
That's always my answer, that's my workout program. So I guess, so you said the daycare is in the basement of the church? So that is another residence there, kind of in the middle?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And, and so that, they'll still be there?
Yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to park behind. Right now, they do pull up here, and they don't use the garage. They just use that little space for parking. But, well, they'll have to adapt and use the parking behind the house for their parking.
Okay.
Because we're getting rid of that.
Access point, yeah, okay. So we had a letter that talked about, you know, like there's just a barricade right now on that Sailor Street or Sailor Circle. Is that, so I assume the fence is now going to go across there as you kind of combine this all together?
Yeah, there's currently not a fence. It is like a retaining wall along this part, and then it's a flat with some, I'll refer to the owner that's here, but they're kind of rogue trees. And we plan to remove those and make some nice landscaping for them.
Okay, great, great. And do you know, because I assume either one or both of you were at the neighborhood meeting, the left-hand turn issue. Can you give me more details about that?
That's, that's this one right here. Because the question's going to become, people that are parking here, how are they going to go nor, going to go north on Seventieth Street? And those that are very brave will exit here and then try to make a left-hand turn onto Seventieth Street. Danae lives in the neighborhood on the other side, and trying to go either way off there is very difficult, but people try it. Most people, I guess, will give up and learn some route here and go to South Street and somehow turn around and get to go north. But right now, there's no, other than that road is to be able to go north is to turn off that road, Monterey.
Is there, I can't remember, is there a median? So like, they, it'll only be right in, right out on South Street? So they can't turn left?
You'll be able to do a left in and a left, left in, but right in and right out.
Okay.
So you cannot do a left out, correct? You'll only do a right going out. They'll put a little island thing in there.
Now, is there a, is there a light at Monterey Drive and Seventieth?
No.
Okay.
And I think it's because they have the crossing right up the street there, Tracy, so that kind of conflicts with the traffic signal at that location.
Yeah, and in the past, we've looked at, you know, had that discussion at times, and I think the school has been opposed to that. I don't know where they would be now, but I think they've been opposed to a traffic light there. There's a lot of traffic that goes on that street in the morning.
And it's fast, yeah. Great.
There's a left turn lane off of South Street onto Monterey.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions for Rep. from Olson?
Okay.
All right, at this time, we will take testimony in support of the application. Is there anyone here who wishes to provide neutral testimony?
I'll just use the, or, I'm Zachary Hill. I live at 6900 South Street, which is right there.
Oh, hold on just a second for to switch over.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, let's see.
All right, I live right here. Lot number three is what they reference this at, which is going to be right next to the new parking lot. I am neutral on the subject. However, I do feel like there's been, there has not been adequate study of the traffic along South Street between Seventieth and my residence, right in here. During pack, peak traffic times, Monday through Thurs, or Monday through Friday, from seven to nine AM or three to six PM, I see two issues. One, the possibility of a non-resolving bottleneck along South Street because of the left turn and the right turn right at that intersection. And then I see it taking much longer time for me to exit my residence along South Street. As far as the non-resolving bottleneck, I brought this up in an email with Aaron of Olson Associates, and the response was the new right turn lane doesn't specifically address the concern since the dermatology clinic traffic creates this situation. I really believe this is an issue that needs a little more thought. When a car heading west, heading west on South Street and then tries to turn into the dermatology parking lot, the first car has to turn between the two, two lanes of traffic to get over there. And if they're not allowed by the other cars, there could be backup into Seventieth Street. Now, I know they're putting in the extra turn lane there, but that is only three cars, is what you guys determined. And I still feel when they put in Phase Two, there's going to be a lot more cars coming in through that intersection right there, or that lane. As for taking longer to get, exit my driveway during peak tri, traffic times, I called and talked to the city planner, George Wesselhoff. And after talking with him about this concern, I suggested moving my driveway access from South Street to Sailor Circle. George suggested that I visit with Brian Perry of the Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. I called and I talked with Brian at LTU about my concerns, and I suggested to him about closing our driveway access from South Street to complete, opening it up on Sailor Street. I said this would create less driver distractions along South Street. And Brian said this would also follow with the city planning recommendations for homes to enter off of an artillery street rather than directly onto a main street. With the unique layout of our lot, this would be possible. My wife and I would actually prefer this option, and we are talking with the surgical center and Danae about working together to make this happen. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any testimony, neutral testimony?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Ron Kratzer, 6900 Sailor Circle. So, we'll go ahead and put the map up there.
Just a second, should pop on.
So I'm this lot, adjacent to the existing parking area. I've attended the open house that was provided there at the church by the surgical center. And actually, I'm coming, I guess I'm not really positive, but I'm not negative. I had some negatives, but I've dealt with people. And I guess I would just come and say that we've worked out some things about a fence, but not just a fence, but softening it with landscaping. At our original meeting, Rob Lenefelder had told us, go look at other properties that they have, and they, they're doing a good job with that. And so I contacted an attorney that I knew that has had a lot of experience down here, and he just said, we'll just get it in writing. And, but it is in the conditions now of the report for, for the fence landscaping. Yeah, so, no, I don't rise in negative. I, I have issues with the current situation, but that can't be resolved by what's going on, so. But I do appreciate both the owner's representative can't be resolved by what's going on, so, so, but I do appreciate both the owners, Representative Rob, and then Danae from the attorney working with us, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, is there any testimony in opposition? Okay, so you have staff questions?
I have a question for Bob again. Is Bob back there?
Yep.
I think I seen him. Bob, this is a true question, I'm not trying to lead anything here. I've been guilty of that in the past, but this is a true question. So, at the intersection of Seventieth and South, does the fact that there's a light at that intersection, does that help mitigate the bottleneck that could occur, that we heard that could occur west of Seventieth? I mean, it, that should, I'm not going to lead, so I'm not going to say what I was going to say, but.
Yes, it would some. I, I understand that people aren't going to pull into the intersection and wait in the intersection.
Right.
From that, so from that direction, yes, it would have a positive.
Because I do see, I do see the concern with the two entrances, they're not quite perpendicular to South, to the, to the business on the south side of South, and now the new entrance to this parking lot on North. I can see that, I can see that there could be a lot of movement there, but the que, again, the question is, is does the light help?
Yes, it does, and I think the other thing that's beneficial here is we have the access point on Seventieth, which is logically going to be the most heavily-used entrance, and obviously, people that work there will learn which one is problematic, and I would expect some adjustment in their use that way.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right, applicant rebuttal?
I don't think we really have anything more to add rebuttal unless you have any more specific questions that we could help you with.
Yeah.
Rob may be the one to answer this, but what are the, the times of the shift changes of staff?
Most of them will be between seven to nine arriving, and what we have done in the past is in the evening, because when we get full, you know, we have an underground garage at our facility now, and that gets full, this is where the overflow goes. And what we do in the afternoon is we allow those people that have parked in this lot to go get their cars and move them to our facility. So, most of the cars will be off at about five.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys maybe just restate, I missed, and I want to make sure that I understood, the detention pond or cell, I guess I should say, did you say that's going in the corner?
Yeah, I think page 12 of the.
I know, but I can't see it big enough.
You got that one?
Here's one other.
Yep.
Is it, it's at the northwest corner of the intersection of South and Seventieth, right?
Correct.
Yes.
That's what it looked like to me.
Paper shuffle in there to get to this? So, yeah, you can kind of make it out here, but that detention area, right at that corner, right in, right in the northwest corner of that intersection. So the intent right now for that parking lot is to pick up that drainage along the curb line, and then a series of curb inlets and storm sewer pipes to ultimately connect and discharge over to Seventieth Street.
So the flow is kind of going, I would say, more west, but?
Yeah, so we're actually going up the hill with the storm pipe, in essence, to get that storm water to discharge back to the Seventieth Street storm sewer. We have just enough elevation on those storm sewer pipes in Seventieth to make it work. So that was beneficial, because there wasn't any storm sewer along South Street for quite a distance towards west.
And so, all of you professionals that have degrees in this are confident that that'll kind of keep, you know, the water from those residences in their basements and stuff along that side?
We do. We're still working out some details with watershed on a few items, but overall, certainly anticipate that this pipe is going to be able to handle the flows, and that that wouldn't overtop the curb line and then continue west.
Awesome. Thank you for explaining.
Aaron, can you give us your name and address?
Thank you.
Yep, Aaron Bright, Olson, 601 P Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Aaron, is, is, is that system with both inlets and pipe, are you oversizing that? Because there's really no redundancy, if it does overtop, it's just going to go, but are you gulping up enough with the size of your calculations to?
Good question. At a minimum, the pipe size would be sized for a ten-year storm.
Okay.
With the elevations of the drive, we would prefer to have an overflow route that actually would come through the drive and back to South, as opposed to, you know, getting so high that it would go over the top of the curb, so.
Is that going, can that happen?
Well, it could happen if the elevations don't work out for it in the, in the final design, but that would be our goal, is to make sure that the overflow route is certainly not west.
Over the top of the property line, but back to the drive and out?
Yes.
Okay, so, but that'll hap, you think that'll?
I would certainly anticipate that.
Okay, perfect. That's good.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Motion.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Core. Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I would move that we approve change of zone 21036 from R1 Residential to O3 PUD.
Second, Ball.
Discussion?
I really appreciate the applicant and everyone involved working with the neighbors, that's, that's a huge part of the process, and it's so much easier on our end when that stuff is ironed out and, and worked out before you guys get here, so I really appreciate that. And I do want to say too, like, you know, I know that the owners of, you know, the surgery center and that their, the expansion are good owners, and that they'll, they should take proper care, and so that helps alleviate some concerns too, for me.
All right.
I would just add to that, where L T U worked with the neighbor to change driveway direction, given the traffic pattern. I mean, that was a very important sort of decision there, an allowance to make this work.
I just want to also say that I really appreciate the transitional aspect of the design. I think that's a really good thing in a situation like this, where you have a use that's going to go away, that's been there a while, and this is actually a good use for this property to support the, the surgery center, and how it's being transitioned over time, I think is a good thing, so.
Any other comments? All right, Jerry?
Hey, this is for the conditional approval of change of zone 21036. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next item is item 4.3, text amendment 21008, to amend Title 26 land subdivision and Title 27 zoning ordinance by amending Title 26 land, oh, sorry, to add a new Chapter 26.13 entitled Procedure for Processing Lot Consolidation, amending Chapter 27.60 Planned Unit Development District, Chapter 27.63 Special Permits, 27.64 Use Permits, and 27.65 Community Unit Plan, all to add a new section entitled Clarification During Review, and appealing said sections as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any exporté communications to be disclosed on this item?
No. All right, Craig?
Good afternoon, Brian Will playing Department, 555 South 10th Street. As Jerry noted, this is a, kind of a small package of six text amendments that includes the both Title 26 land subdivision ordinance and Title 27 zoning ordinance. Taken together, they're all intended to prove the process, improve process by updating the effective ordinance accordingly. Two of the amendments that we'll talk about, consolidation final plat and the planning director clarification, are new sections of Lincoln municipal code. Taken together, all the proposed amendments are designed to enhance the process of application, review, and approval, as well as the interaction among city departments, residents, and the development community. So, there are six of them, I'll just go through each one, one at a time, and just give a brief summary discussion of it. The first one is an amendment to Section 2611060. So right now, in the ordinance for, talking about final plats, subdivision ordinance, it actually specifies an amount of review time for staff and those reviewing agencies, and from the time an application is sent out, everybody knows they have 10 days, and that's stipulated in the ordinance. So what this is doing is changing subsequent reviews to five days. What I mean by that is, I submit an application today, it gets routed out to agencies to review, they have 10 days to comment back. Those comments are then assembled by planning staff and provided to the applicant. I need to address those, so I resubmit, and instead of then that resubmit all lasting 10 days, staff is now given five days. Rationale is, we're just looking at comments previously made to make sure that they were addressed. I would note that this does say five business days, excuse me, not just five days, which was a point of discussion for staff. The second one is adding Chapter 2613, it's creating the consolidation final plat. In recent years, the city had approved an agreement, it was called a TORA, or Transfer and Restriction Agreement. That is, if I'm coming in, I'm applying for a building permit, and it includes multiple lots, the transfer of restriction agreement would be required by the city to guarantee that those lots that were showing on my building permit remain together. That is, lots that required them to stay together for the purpose of the building permit, whether it was shared parking or a building too close to a lot line or going over a lot line, there was no other way to prevent those lots from being sold off, thereby potentially creating some violation of the zoning ordinance perhaps. So what we have created here is what's called the consolidation final plat, because the city no longer does the transfer of restriction agreement. So your only recourse is that applicant with multiple lots in the building permit, if it has been noted that by building safety, you can't approve it as it is, is to do this consolidation final plat. Well, what we're proposing is the consolidation final plat. This would be a simplified version of the final plat as it exists in the ordinance, but under a specific set of conditions. That is, there's no additional easements to be required, or easements to be released for that matter. There will be no improvements, so that means there's no subdivision agreement or escalor agreement, that it's the same owner involved with all the properties. I mean, by definition, what I'm describing for those folks that are involved with it every day is the simplest final plat that you can describe, that's what we're trying to define here. And that's really what was, and that's really what was encompassed in the previously, the transfer restriction agreement. So, without this, you'd be, you'd be left to go through the standard final plat process, and that's taking two to three months perhaps, this will greatly speed up that process. The third one is an amendment to Section 2619031, to require subsequent final plat additions. Sorry, is that, that's not me, is it? Okay, I don't think so. Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay. To amend Section 2619031 to require subsequent final plat addition titles to use in numeric designations. Sounds like a simple, simple thing, and we've been doing final plats for decades, so what this is saying, is the best way I can describe it, Brian's, Brian Will Heights has just been approved, so now I want the final plat. My first one is going to be Brian Will Heights Edition. The second final plat will be Brian Will Heights First Edition, but that designation of First Edition, there's, there's no specification for how I spell that. That is, the first, I mean, of course, addition, we know how to spell that, we know how to spell my name, of course, but what we found is over time, final plats have been recorded spelling first, F-I-R-S-T, or using the number one, S-T, and it's created multiple, it's created multiple problems. One of them is, of course, indexing, trying to find a final plat, you don't know how it spells, and there are literally thousands of final plats of record. So just, just simple change. You have to use an numeric designation, this clears that up. The next one is to amend Section 2623040 to require access easements to detention facilities to be 20 feet in width. Currently, we have no standard for access easements to detention facilities. So what we're talking about are those essentially storm water detention ponds that we see all around the city, some are privately owned, some are owned by the City of Lincoln, owned and managed by the City of Lincoln, and some of them are located next to a public street or private roadway. Some of them are remote, located remotely, in their, in their own outlot, 10 hundreds of feet perhaps from a street. Well, in those cases, where they're remotely located, they have to be accessed by an access easement. Currently, there's no standard, it could be 10 feet, could be 15 feet, could be 30 feet, but it's usually on the lower end as opposed to the higher end. We settled on a standard of 20 feet, that allows enough width for potentially the tractors and whatever equipment would be required to get to them. We have some that are narrower and that parks and private entities do have trouble getting across, so hopefully moving forth, won't fix them necessarily, but moving forward, we'll make sure we have enough room. The next one is to delete LMC Section 2627080 in its entirety, and this is a screening requirement for residential lots adjacent to major streets and railroads, and this comes from the subdivision ordinance. The problem is, there's two main problems with this and why we're recommending to eliminate it. Number one, it really duplicates and is repetitive of a standard that already exists into design standards. So, in almost all cases where this would apply, we're already doing this. Second of all, this, and this, okay, I want to put this the right way, this, this shifts the burden from really private entities who have the right to do this on private property to essentially, when it's in Title 26, that burden is then passed on and becomes the burden of the City of Lincoln to require it. It's not that it's a burden, it's that it's a problem, in that the city would then be out trying to install an improvement on private property, and that's just, that's just problematic. And so, really, for those two reasons, we're suggesting to eliminate this entirely, and I don't believe anybody will miss it, to be honest. The last one is planning director clarification, and really, this is probably of all of them, the most significant. This affects four chapters within the zoning ordinance, Chapter 2760, the PUD, Planned Unit Development, Chapter 2763, Special Permits, Chapter 2764, Use Permits, and Chapter 2765, Community Unit Plans. Now what those all have in common is those are all applications to the planning department, where the planning department is the primary, or the, the department that's primarily responsible for the review, and those will all come then to the planning commission. And so, you're probably more familiar with these than a lot of folks are. That is, in the sense of the detail, the notes, the complications associated with, and the detail associated with the site plans. So because of that level- So, because of that level of complication and detail, it's, it's not, it's not hard to imagine that there can be, that there can be more than one way to look at how a note's supposed to be interpreted, or a particular, particular setback, or some other detail on a site plan. Those sorts of questions do come up, and what we're suggesting here is that the planning director, because of the planning department's involvement in these, and honestly intimacy, and more, the higher level of review involved with the planning department, that the planning department, the planning director be allowed to be the individual that makes the clarification when those issues arrive, when there's a, there's a, there's a question of what does this mean? Is it A or B? Well, given the planning department's level of understanding, planning director's allowed to make the call in those cases. So, with that, we're, we have distributed this to the development community, we made it available to the public. Of course, it's been reviewed by city staff, and just haven't had any negative, well, once I made the corrections that city staff wanted, I haven't had any negative comments about it. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Tracy?
Um, I'm gonna kind of go backwards in order. So, the one that you just talked about, if there are questions now, what's the process or what has to happen?
Well, okay, it can, I guess, I guess that probably the most likely, and thing we're trying to avoid, is having to go back through the process, or have the applicant have to go through the process of doing administrative amendment to correct something that one department thinks needs to be fixed. When in fact, the planning department doesn't think that's the case, perhaps, okay? So, it avoids that.
And it would save them all that time?
Saves, saves the applicant time and trouble, saves city staff time and trouble, not having to intake those applications and review them. It's, it's time savings, and labor savings, and effort savings on the part of everybody, but particularly the applicant.
On the 26.13, consolidating the final plat, oh wait, I'm skipping a whole bunch, sorry. I'll go with that one, since that's where I started. So, right now, I mean, I know that we're not doing the Toras, but are we doing this, we're not doing the consolidating final plat right now?
No, what, no. It would just be a final plat. What we're, what we're establishing here is, this, this thing sort of works a couple ways, I guess. What we're establishing here are the criteria for a plant, final plat, where there will be no improvements, there aren't, there, there won't be no easement releases or new easements required. There will be no removal of driveways and access points, nor, nor new access points. It's the simple act of eliminating or moving a lot line. Okay, so...
So, I just think of like, maybe we have two lots, and then we're combining them into one, it's just, and we're not having like, any of those extracurricular things going on?
That's, that's, that's essentially, that's essentially it.
Okay.
Yes. And so, it, it does two things. It, it lets the applicant know that, okay, this is a simple final plat, not going to be any improvements, should be much quicker. It's also letting staff know that there's really not going to be any requirements here. We're not going to be asking for driveways to be renewed, removed. We're not going to be asking for new easements. We're all aware of what the, of what the criteria are here.
Right now?
Which are simply the same, which are essentially the same, same conditions under which the old TORA was approved under.
And so, right now, they'd have to go through the whole process?
Yep, and they, they could, they would be reviewed, and under the current provisions for, excuse me, final plat under the ordinance, Lincoln Transportation Utilities has the ability to remove driveways, for example, limit, limit, limit access. It's common that there might be new easements required, or some revision to the easements, or easements have to be released. All of that takes time. All that's additional review. All of that is, or are additional requirements that will be applied to a plat under this, under these conditions here. This is the simplest, most basic final plat that there is, and this is advising everybody of what they can do under these circumstances.
On reducing the time from 10 days down to five days for the re-review, are you guys already accomplishing that, meeting that time goal right now?
I'm sorry, that, we're, we're doing it in 10 days. So, your first, first round review, 10 days, comments will come back to you, resubmit, staff gets 10 days again to re-review, and then comments come back to you. What is doing that second submittal on, it's going from 10 days to five days.
And are you guys already meeting that deadline now? I mean, like, do you, I mean...
10 days?
No, the five days. Like, what I want to know is, do you have stats to say, like, we can, we, we are confident that our staff can meet this turnaround time before I implement it? You know, I want to make sure that it's not going to place undue burden on you guys.
Well, no, we, we, we've talked about it internally. And I mean, there was, there was concern initially that, okay, this is, yeah, this is gonna, this is gonna place some additional burden, perhaps, to do it quicker. I would say, I'd say probably a majority within five days are done currently, okay? There's a few that sometimes take longer. But as we talked about it, I think everybody acknowledges that, okay, the second review, it's not from scratch. I'm not starting over. I don't have to review everything from the beginning. I'm really going in just to make sure they didn't do some major revisions here, change the final plat, or whatever it is they're looking at. And then, I'm just going to go in and check and make sure that my items, because I know which ones they are, that they've been corrected. It should not, it should not take.
And I assume that you got input from other city departments?
Yes, yes.
That provide these approvals?
Yes, we have.
They're okay with this shortened time?
From, from the beginning, yes, from the beginning. Well, and I can tell you this, we'd originally, this had originally been drafted from 10 days to five days, not five business days, but in talking worth, talking with and working with other staff, that accommodation was made to revise it. I mean, the, with the one example that was used was the Thanksgiving Day holiday, where something comes in Wednesday, I'm going to be working on Sunday, right? Some, somehow to get that done. So, yes, I don't think there's any concern that we can't do that.
On the numeric designations, I'm not really familiar with how your database works, but is that something that you guys have someone going in and fixing? Like, when you find one that is not numeric, do you go in and make it numeric? Or do you have someone that's going to go in and actively track these and change them?
That, that's part of the problem, we can't. That is technically and officially the name of that final plat. So, if it was, if it was Tracy's First Edition, and your surveyor spelled it out, F-I-R-S-T, that is the name of that recorded final plat.
And I didn't know if like, you could put a tag on that, so that it can be cross-referenced when you're looking it up in the database?
You know, and even if we could, we've got final plats going back to the founding of the city, eight, like, 1860 C. It would be an almost insurmountable task, I think, to go back and do that. So, but at least, we're going to fix it. Moving, I mean, we've been doing this as we, you know, as, as a matter of practice in the planning department, but the whole world necessarily doesn't know it, and will submit plats with the wrong name, and then you've got to correct it. So, we just, just while getting the ordinance and make it part of the rules.
And then, on the easement to 20-foot, setting that standard, what happens to easements that are already approved that aren't 20-foot? Are they so-called grandfathered in? They won't be expected to change?
No, there's, there's no change there. If there were, if there were one that it was 10 feet and it's a problem, then there's got to be some negotiation for additional easement through the normal, through the normal way. But no, this won't affect any of them that have been granted up to this point.
Thank you. Yeah, Dick?
Just to follow up on Tracy's first que, first question, and I can't remember which chapter number it is. Is it 065?
The Planning Director Clarification one?
That's, that affects four chapters.
Right. Okay. My question is, if, if he's got a choice of A and B, and the planning director comes out saying it's, it's A, and the applicant thinks it's B?
And the applicant thinks it's B? Okay.
What's the, what's the record?
Well, honestly, Dick, that's not the way it usually works. It's usually, Dick Campbell just applied for a building permit, and it's reviewed by multiple departments. And one department's saying, no, that's supposed to be green, and Dick Campbell's saying, no, it's supposed to be blue, okay? And let's say then, for example, the planning department looks at it and says, yeah, we kind of agree with Dick, it, it should be blue, okay? Well, maybe not everybody's entirely convinced. Understanding that the planning department is more involved in that review, and has a better understanding, we think, of the intent, you know, the original concept, then the director can issue clarification and say, no, that's right. It should be, it should be blue. This, this isn't, this isn't, the scenario you're describing almost never, never occurs. And really, this isn't what that is, that's designed for.
Right.
Yes. This is internally so that staff can arrive at a common understanding.
Got it. Understand better.
Can I follow up, though? So, Brian, if, if a situation arose where the, well, this, the applicant probably wouldn't even know this process is going on, right? But, but let's say the applicant does. Let's see the applicant does. Would, would your, in your experience, would the planning staff or planning director give a call to the applicant just to make sure that their, their concern, not concerns, but their original intent was in fact being addressed? Does that ever happen? I mean, I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, I, I've got to tell you, in, in, in almost every case, I think we can look at it, I don't think the planning department really has to go back and, you know, visit with original parties or who was involved. I mean, I think in almost every case, we, we think that we understand and know that, you know, the original...
Because you've been working, you've been working with the team, the applicant team.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah, we know what that intent for that setback, we, we know what that was. Maybe it just didn't state it in a way that everybody understands that's what it means. Okay. Maybe it could have been stated differently. We're going to clarify, this is what it meant, so other staff, they can, they can have that assurance and that comfort of knowing, okay, well, the planning department's telling us for certain, this is what it was supposed to say.
Okay.
Right. So, like I said, really, this is, more than anything, a mechanism for staff internally to come to a consensus. It's rarely that, that Brian is arguing with Dick Campbell over something he's showing, it's, it's internally.
Okay.
Got it.
All right. Thank you for...
It would be good, though, if there's public testimony in support for a developer, or developer-type representative would maybe corroborate that. You know what I mean?
Well, we can, we can always hope, but I, I can't, I can't, I can't make that happen. I can't pay anybody to do that, so...
All right. Any other questions for Brian right now? Okay. Thank you very much. Will we do testimony from the applicant? Do we do that, or we just...
That's the applicant. I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I wanted to make two more points. David Carey, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is a point of clarification. So, that, that last point that Brian was talking about, when there are clear omissions, and there's a lack of information on the plan, that, we're not talking about, you know, further developing that. That, that's the type of, you know, administrative amendment still, that would still have to happen. That does happen sometimes, but this is, again, like Brian said, this is meant to have that internal clarification of where we're moving forward. The other point is simply to say that, once this clarification is put in the file, we will use that as that point of discussion moving forward, like, when future information comes forward, more building permits, things like that. So, hopefully, in most cases, once you have that clarification, it helps the future decision-making as well. So, I just wanted to make those other two points.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Dave?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any testimony in support?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200. Here today on behalf of our firm, and the multitude of clients that we do represent that have to go through the final plating process. To, to express our support for this, our great support, it is so encouraging when a city department takes the time to listen to what we believe are their clients, is generally the development community, as well as the public, but to, to look at the processes and try to make them better. And that's certainly what planning has done here, and I want to commend the planning department for that, because plating is a process that's important to homeowners. We have a lot that come into our firm and say, my lot's so big, and now I can make some money, and I want to split off this extra 100 feet, and we have to tell them, you know, this could take 90 to 100 days, and I have a buyer, and, and the TORA agreements were removed, I think, for some legal reasons, over time. And so, it's, it's just important, whether it's a developer or a homeowner, the final plat is akin to a 16-year-old kid that wants his driver's license. And, and he's, and he's, he's went in and he's, he takes a test, and they say, well, wait, wait a minute, we got to review this again, and this is going to take longer and longer. And you just can't transfer a parcel until you have an approved final plat. So, the decreased review time is greatly appreciated, and the consolidation because of lack of Toras, and then lastly, the ones that, Dennis, you were mentioning, somebody like myself should come up and corroborate, that most certainly, what it is, is generally a situation where building and safety, I guess the best way I could describe it, is sometimes they don't speak planning, or understand planning. And so, we have generally had to request the planning department to go over and offer some interpretation. And I think this now solidifies the ability to do that in writing, and that that is the final say, that they were the ones we were working with when we came in with a project and started it, and went through the whole thing, and submitted a prelim plat, or use permit, or PUD, and we made the adjustments along the way, and went through this body, and everything got approved, and that generally, I think, the development community and the planning department knows what the intent of a specific note was. But building and safety has to look at things through a very rigid, black-and-white view sometimes. And so, the ability to provide closure to that through a defined process is immensely helpful, so...
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I just, it's good to hear it from you in the, in the record. Yeah.
So, without much more ado, we are in full support of this, and would ask that you approve it.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Mike? All right, thank you. Any other testimony in support?
Brad Marshall with Olson, 601, 601 P Street, Suite 200. I, I, like Mike, am here in support of, of these changes. Coincidentally, I made a call to Steve Hendrickson a couple weeks ago. There kind of been a small group of, of developer representatives and staff that are keeping up with some ongoing discussions. And I said, hey, where are we at? Where are we at on a couple of these things? He said, glad you called. And I was very pleased with the feedback that I had gotten from Steve with the upcoming text amendment that is before you today. I can tell you that... I can tell you that the speed of process of, of review times were one of the key items that we have talked about several times, about speeding that up through, through the process. And I think it definitely has been communicated, like, when, when you get the second review, it is, it is easier to kind of go back and make sure that those comments, and hopefully speed that up, and not a complete review, and, and keep the process moving. Subsequent reviews and additional five days here, and additional five there, days to another review just seem to prolong the process. I understand staff is, is very, very busy many of the times that they're going through this, but hopefully this can actually accelerate some of this, as we're going through the review times. So the five to 10 days to do certainly support. Consolidation final plat, that was actually a new one, and, and I will say, I hope this works. I hope, I've got my fingers crossed, as much as we, as it's outlined here, any process through the final plat that can help streamline this is, is very beneficial, as we found out with a couple other items that are there. The one concern, I'll just maybe put this on the record a little bit, is the caveat that there is no removal or addition of easements through the process there. And I think the loophole is, if there's a removal, get it taken care of before you come forward with a consolidation plat. I hope that our partners that review these understand the simplicity behind the final plats and of a consolidation plat, and this is an opportunity to add easement. And I'm sure there's probably discussions that will follow this, but I think the framework is there for this to be successful. And the director, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say, yes, this is, this is kind of where we at. This is, the, the process does allow building and safety to review these through their initial reviews, but sometimes it just doesn't hit all, all cylinders or thinking of this exact situation that they're put into until, you know, maybe a building permit is actually submitted. So the interpretation and implementation of that, and having a final say actually was on and discussed quite a bit at our level and in some of our meetings and phone calls with, with staff. So do appreciate that as well. So with that?
Thank you. Any questions?
End of show.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in support? Any neutral testimony? Testimony in opposition? Seeing none, staff questions? Advocate rebuttal? Okay.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Cor.
Okay. Bo? Sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay. Bo?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I would move that we approve text amendment 21008.
Second, Shear.
Discussion.
Yeah, I can personally see benefit in some of these, as, as we have brought forth totally new ideas to the city, being, one being our live work units. Planning totally understood everything. When it got to building and safety, we ran into all kinds of problems. And it took several weeks to work those problems out. And had it been able to be, the planning department been able to communicate to building and safety, no, this is the way it is, it would have saved a ton of time. So I can, I can totally understand some of these things.
Dennis?
My experience is exactly the same as Dick's, and I, I share the same enthusiasm for supporting this. The, just from a personal standpoint, I would just tell you, my opinion is, is that there is no reason for us not to approve this. It's, it's that good for the processes that Dick's been involved with, and I've been involved with a number of years too. So it's just a really great thing, as, and as one of the guys said, I can't remember who, which one. For our planning department to really take the initiative to want to do this is really a great thing. I mean, our planning department's really good, so I'm obviously going to support this.
All right. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of text amendment 21008. Bo?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Move that we adjourn.
Oh, first we have to say, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
There's nobody left.
Yes. All right.
Move to a jury.
Second, Cor.
Okay. Bo?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. We adjourn.[1794.13]